All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have a moment of silent prayer for our invocation and be followed by the pledge of allegiance, if you will, please stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 19 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
No.
Hold on, just a minute.
You're fine.
Yes, if we could pull number 15 for the regular agenda.
Item 15, recommendation for award ITB 2228 alarm sprinkler inspection services. You want that pulled or you want it on regular agenda?
Regular agenda. And, yes, I have a question on number 28, Resolution 157. I think it's a continuation, is that right Chuck, for the Gilbert Road? If so, I'll leave it where it is.
Good, yes. So, I'd also like to, if the chairman would allow, what 2028 is, is that when the board approved the IGA, the amended IGA, the last meeting, the purchase and sale agreement was not an attachment, so we brought it back to make sure that the purchase and sale agreement was attached, so there was a full vote. There, on your dais, is the latest version between OA Development and the Development Authority to reflect some language related to the amount, the change in the amount and how that's distributed, if there's any cost savings. So, I'd like to, I guess, amend what you have as your attachment to include the latest version of the PSA, but yes, it's related to the Gilbert Road matter.
So, it's just a language change?
Okay, well, I'm fine. I'm fine, I'm good with that.
Any others?
Mr. Chairman, I...
Oh, wait a minute, go ahead, Ms. Reed.
I have one other item, too, yes, for 22, 2022-158, which is item 29 on your agenda, slight modification, and the resolution is to the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, to support the North Clayton Sunday Fun Day, as opposed to Community Fun Day, and it's hosted by Commissioner Gail Hambrik in partnership with the Clayton County Parks and Recreation, Fire and Emergency Services, Senior Services, Corrections, and Police Departments, to authorize the county and its departments to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of their resolution, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution for other purposes. Basically, it just changes the name and adds a couple of additional departments.
Thank you.
Okay, number 11. If we could pull that for the regular agenda.
Madam Clark, you clear? Number 11, the recommendation for award SP 22-178 eviction intervention project for Clayton County. Any others?
Yes, can we pull number 27 to the regular agenda? 2022-156.
Resolution for Clayton County Board of Commissioners establishing the timeline for the Board of Commissioners to meet, for pre-agenda meetings. You clear on that one as well, Madam Clark?
I'm clear.
Any others? All right, here now, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
One second, Mr. Chairman, I've got to go. I need to ask, what are the board, because I know Commissioner Anderson isn't here, and there are a couple of items on the zoning hearings, so I just want the board to consider if we want to pull those items.
We have to pull them at the time of the hearing.
Okay, I'm clear.
Any others? All right, is there a motion to approve the, or adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear the consent agenda approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here are none of those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 11, Special Services Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. This is a recommendation for award of special purchase 22-178, which is an eviction intervention project for Clayton County. The request is to award the contract to Africa's Children's Fund, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of $405,000 for the program administrative fee for the allocation of $1 million in rental and utility assistance to the Clayton County residents. Funding is available through the Georgia DCA reallocated grant funds and the department recommendation memo and agreement are attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman, who is designated, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Davis made the motion, second. Are there any questions?
Yes. I'm reading this, and this program administration fee is half of the million dollars. And, and hopefully, we will have this group in. Who is African Children's Fund?
Yes, Commissioner, this is a vendor that we awarded the original contract to last year. We did a smaller contract with them to provide the same services. This is just for them to continue to provide the services under this type of the grant funding versus what they were providing for the grant for from last year.
Okay, but who are, I don't, I don't know them.
I think Dr. was it Mombama?
I mean, I keep saying, yes, 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 for the money, but then when I see a million dollars, and then half of the million dollars is going for administration fee, when I would think it, it should go toward the eviction, to people that's, you know, getting evicted. That's a lot of money.
Just talked to the interim CFO, Commissioner, that a million dollars isn't correct. The allocation from DCA was $9 million, so it shouldn't reflect a million dollars, should be 9 million, opposed to the million dollars reflected in your, your board packet.
So, that's a little better, but that's still a lot of money for administration fee.
Let's hear from Judge Hill.
Good evening, I can speak, Mr. Mombama is here with the African Children's Fund. I've worked with them since March of last year, and they have helped disperse over $6.2 million. So, Mr. Mombama can speak as far as where the, as far as their employees, what have you, but I can't speak as to their diligence and efficiency with the magistrate court.
Well, let me say this, and I've said this before, some months ago, we have made contact, I know in the last couple of years, with that office. My constituent aide has called or whatever, and we have never received any service. Our constituents that we've referred, it was always some question or something else, or they had to pay money before they could get service, so I'm just a little skeptical.
Well, I can tell you, as an officer of the court, they work in the courthouse, so they're in, they're actually using the office space, so they're in there with us. They are dispersing funds twice a week, and they have been doing so since March.
Thank you, Judge. I'm glad you said that. They don't have an office, you know, and as much money as we've been giving them, I would think they would have an office in Clayton. I understand they have an office either in Fulton, or Henry, or DeKalb, or somewhere, is that correct?
I didn't say that they don't have an office. They're coming there to disperse the funds, because we have people coming in, landlords, to pick up checks on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Do they have a Clayton County office?
Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, in respect to saying that almost $400,000 compared to 1 million in direct services to client, and this is the real fact, we are actually $87,000 over the last contract that we had, because when we were awarded the first installment, we were given $400,000 to administer, we were offered another 1.8, we still use the same, so 4 million plus 1.8 plus additional funds, still less than 10% of the administrative fees that we used. And we kept, we were told to keep going, because a contract was coming to renew, so in actual fact, these $405,000, we've already spent, 80-something thousand dollars into that, that's fact one, two, we have office here and satellite locations in Clayton County. And the third point is that when we started the ERA program with Clayton County, a number was set up where people can call directly, other than our administrative office, and so people who earlier on had had our number in Atlanta, but couldn't reach us when they were trying to get assistance from the ERA, that may be a discrepancy, but we have fixed that, where we have eight cell phone numbers for eight employees working directly in our housing program in Clayton County. So, the summary is that even before I came here, we already have contract for this $405,000 that I've signed with the, with the officials of Clayton County, and $800,000 already been, been spent, or 80-something thousand dollars, sorry, has already been spent towards the administration of the program. So, we continue to be good steward of the funds, and not only are we using Clayton County allocation to do the work here, but we actually have leveraged funds from other sources, including Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta have noticed the work that we do here, and assisted us to leverage what you've given us, plus the location that our own board of directors have allocated for us to help citizens of Clayton County. So, that's just what I wanted to share, which is very important information. Thank you so much.
Where is your office in Clayton County?
We are on Highway 85.
Can you give me an address?
It is 8052, Highway 85 in Clayton County.
Okay, do you have a contact person that we can call when our constituents are calling us, because they cannot get help from you all?
I would be glad to contact someone in your office and give all the information of our staff that are working here in Clayton County.
Okay.
If I could just say one more thing, if there's, I know Commissioner Franklin can attest to this, if there's been any issues as far as citizens needing assistance, people have reached out to the magistrate court as well, and I have made that a priority to make sure that dispossession is addressed as efficiently as possible. So, that, it's in magistrate court, but I've received emails from Commissioner Franklin, from other different constituents, and I take it seriously, and I do address those concerns.
Right, and that's where we get the help, with your person that you have, with your staff, that's where we've gotten the help, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
And thank you so much, Judge. And just in conclusion, and maybe just a little bit of takeaway for all of us, let's say we have 1,000 citizens from Clayton County that are in need of assistance, or come to the county, or come to the providers for assistance, out of 1,000, there might be five that are going to look for something wrong, anywhere possible, just a fact, it's true. So, we're gonna have a small percentage, no matter what agencies do, they're gonna complain, and they're gonna go to Commissioners. I just want to say that fast, because in 29 years that I've done this work, we've done it diligently, but we also see the obstacles that we prayerfully have been overcoming. So, thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I just pulled, excuse me, sir, how are you? Tell me that address again, if you don't mind.
That's 8025.
Oh, 8025, okay. And I do want to say that, Judge, you have been very responsive, but I must concur with Vice Chair Hambrik, and in the fact that the only time that we're able to really get things done is by contacting your office, and I, and as Commissioners, it shouldn't get to that point. And I could see what you're saying, sir, about the 5%, we get it, trust me, I get it here all the time, that 5% that's gonna always complain, but then the rest of them, you don't, that are really happy. But the problem I have with this is, it's a little bit more than the 5%. When we're getting ready to have a presentation from our school system, from Miss Sonia Davis, and talking about the disconnect, or like, for instance, I got an email that I shared with the board the other day, we all got the email, of an educator, a Clayton County teacher, not getting the responses to be able to have a place for she and her daughter to stay, I don't think that that's the 5%. And so, that is really my concern. I believe that even though the motion has been made, listening to the questions that have been asked, it may be an opportunity for us to do, number one, to fix what y'all presented, because if it's not accurate, we can't vote on it. It needs to be accurate, and that's number one. Number two, let's look at the budget, let's take some time. If we owe you $87,000, we'll give you the $87,000, but I am not confident enough to go ahead and award the rest of it. So, it may be best just to hold this, so that we can discuss it, and you could come before us with actual numbers, and present to not only the board, but to the public of exactly how you're using those administrative fees. Because it's one thing to say, well, we're helping so many, but I want to know, are we being efficient and effective with the amount of funding that we're paying to you all to be able to provide the service?
Commissioner Franklin, I do have a question. If you're giving him the reimbursement, which they've already earned, and you're saying, you're asking to put a stop or a pause on additional funds, then that means we are, we have funds that we are not able to disperse to the citizens of Clayton County.
We don't want to stop the funds, but this is the deal. This is very important, but for it to be that important, to be quite honest with you, sir, I would have my whole team here ready to go through those numbers, because these questions have been asked for a while. And number two, as I stated, this information is in error. So, even though it is very important, we get these funds to the citizens, I'm like Vice Chair, if we know that, yes, we need to get the funds out, but we're not doing our due diligence to make sure that the amounts are in here are accurate, and that we're using as much of the funds to help the citizens as possible, and we're still having people not having service, then we're doing our community a disservice. So, it's not saying to stop, put a stop to the contract, it's just you all haven't provided us with enough information tonight.
So, so are they able to go, I just need, I just need to be clear, so I know what's gonna happen in court as of next, as of tomorrow. So, are they able to continue on or not? Because we have disbursements that are, that should be going out tomorrow.
Let's ask, and we may need to hold this half executive session, we may need to do it to where it's an extension without a permanent commitment until we can get those answers clarified, unless you have someone to answer those questions, sir.
What's the correct amount, dollar amount?
So, I think according to the CFO, the correct amount is 9 million, I'll just confirm that. So, the correct amount is 9 million, so it is the 450,000 administrative fee off of the 9 million versus the 1 million.
And that's a percentage point of what?
Right, that is a percentage of the administrative.
Of what, 10%, 8%, 5%, what, how much?
4%. 4%, right.
That's a 4%. Now, I, I have known and worked with AFC for a long time, and I'm very confident in their ability to do the job, and to know that they, by them working with magistrate court and Judge Hill, that they are doing everything within their ability and doing it right, to take care of the citizens of Clayton County, and just me personally, I'm not comfortable with holding money from the citizens who could be evicted tomorrow, next week, or even the week after that, especially if this money is held up. Now, the one thing that we could do is amend the motion to do the correction of the amount of money, and then go forward with a vote, and that's what I, who made, did you make the motion?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to amend?
I'm willing to amend.
Well, hold on a second before, oh, you're, you have a question, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just heard something about, we owe you money. Was that correct?
Excuse me?
I heard something about owing, was it 800 something?
87,000. No, 87,000. So, actually, as I stated earlier, if we look at the administrative costs versus the amount of money, it is very small, that's correct. And as George stated, on Mon, on Wednesday, tomorrow, we're gonna send checks out, and staff are working to do that, Monday, we're gonna do the same thing. And in my 29 years as well, this is the smallest administrative cost we've had to use to do work. And I appreciate the work of the Commissioners, because, you know, you are here to serve the citizens, and we are your partners to do so. But I can state one story very, very quickly. On one evening, the judge called me, it was around 7:40, said there is a lady the school system referred, that is homeless, with nine children. She called me, within 15 minutes, we housed that lady in a three-bedroom self-furnished house. Then I called the school's system, I called the hot office to partner with us to see what we could do for this lady for 12 months, with heavy case management. We had the meeting at the judge's chamber, and after cross-examining this lady and having another meeting, we realized that she was one of that 5% I said earlier, and with, you know, constantly needing help, and being delinquent and all that. So, the school system dropped, the hot office dropped, we were the only agency that took this lady, and went to an apartment complex and negotiated partnership, where they paid three months and we paid nine months, and we moved this lady into a three-bedroom apartment. If this is not, if this does not happen, the nine children would have been taken away from her by default. And she witnessed that, God saw that and saw our heart in doing this. I don't know anywhere else I can use less than 5% to do work, it's only in Clayton County. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
How many employees do you have?
We have eight.
Eight employees?
Yes.
And we owe you 80?
87,400.
Okay, so is that 87 plus the 400?
No, 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 we've been taking out of this, that is a bit of that. When, when I'm paid this 80-something thousand, it's not in addition to 405. I was told by Doctor Smith, keep going, the money is going, is coming, so I'm spending our own resources, knowing that we will be reimbursed. And so, if there is anything that we need to continue to do to work together with the Commissioner and our office, we are open. We rather fix than being broken.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Rogers? What is the max administration fee that can be charged?
If I'm not mistaken, I think it's 10%.
Maximum administration fee is 10%?
I think off the grant, yes.
Okay, and he's charging 4% off the grant?
Yes.
Do we know what the other surrounding counties are charging?
I'm not aware, I think, and we did just brief market analysis, but it probably was about 6, 7%.
So, we're paying under?
Yes, and some of them are at max at 10%. We do get that information back when we put out bids for that, where we'll look at the bid call sheet, so that's kind of our market analysis.
Great, thank you. And the other point is, I know I have called you, Judge, and I've also called, sir, called you on the Publix family that was sitting outside, and one thing I can say is, you came, you came to Batforce and got that lady in, and her, and her three kids, I believe it was, and extended stay hotel, so I appreciate you all and the work you've done. What I want to say is, we've got to be careful that we do not cut off this spigot, just to begin to look at it and find out what's going on, because we'll have a lot of people that are gonna suffer, starting tomorrow. And we don't need our homeless population to go up tomorrow, and we don't need to be the ones that are justifying why it should go up. So, granted, there might be some things that need to be fixed, and I think we need to begin to look at them, but I think we've got to begin to service our community, continue to service the community.
Let me say this, I would love to have the relationship that you have with the chairman and with the...
No, there is no relationship.
For, whatever.
First time I've ever met him.
No, I'm just saying, because we don't get that, District 2 does not get that. We, we don't get results when we call, so hopefully, we can work on that. And I don't want to hold up the money either, but I just think we need some more conversation after this. Are there other agencies that can do this, or do this, or whatever? I just want to know more, and for my constituents to get the help when we call you.
And there's one other point that's been brought up, that we're gonna have to deal with as a board. And I, and I'm so sorry that you continue to work and incur $87,000 in fee, that means you're operating outside of your current contract. And unfortunately, only this board can extend agreements, so even if you were told by somebody on this staff to keep working, that was inaccurate. Somebody should have brought the concern before this staff, before this board, so that we understand what is going on, so that we didn't have to wait till we get to this point and ask these questions. The bottom line is, you extended these services beyond your contractual agreement, and you incurred costs based upon somebody that did not have said authorization. We gotta work on that. Number two, the information that's presented is just not right, Judge. You can't ask us to vote on something when the information presented is inaccurate.
I didn't submit.
Oh, no, not you, but just letting you know that that's what we're looking at. You can't deal with money, ma'am. But, but I'm just letting, I'm letting you know that it's not accurate what's presented to the board. And number three, sir, I know that I could tell and sense you were a noble gentleman, but as a board, we have to make good, sound decisions. We don't want to stop what you've got to do for the next couple of days, but based upon what I just shared, and you did not give us any concrete information, you're all just telling us you owe us 87,000. You're just telling us the information is inaccurate. We have nothing in black and white to base a decision on. So, all I'm appealing to and asking this board to do, is get with Mr. Reed, even if we have to wait till the next board meeting, or extend the agreement officially, so that you can disperse the checks tomorrow, and the day after, so that we can have the information we need to make a sound decision. Simple as that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, but still, a small point to know, we are still in contract till February of 2023. The issue is just to approve amount.
Okay.
Yeah, we are on, on contract, we are a two-year contract with Clayton County, so we're not out of contract.
And, and I'm gonna beg to differ, because contract has two stipulations, Judge knows, not just the time period, but funding. So, whether you may not be outside of your period, you're outside of the funding that we agreed to provide to you. Either way, it's outside of the agreement. Either of those two can only be approved by this Board of Commissioners, whether positive or negative.
Chair, can, can't watch it, this should probably be directed at Attorney Reed, can we amend this to change that 1 million to 9 million on this?
Yes, if that's simply a squirmor's error, as far as it being actually 9 million in the contract that is at issue, and your book says 9 million, then that's just the header, that's not the actual agreement. Second thing is, every contract that the county has, has a termination provision in there, so if at any point there's a reason that the board decides to terminate, there are stipulations within every contract the county enters into, if you decide at some point that you would need to terminate.
Thank you. And he stated that the contract officially ends February 2023?
That's correct.
So, about eight months? Okay, so, my thought is, if that's the case, then we begin to, like the other Commissioners are saying, begin to review, but continue the payment of it, so that if we are going to cut it off, that we aren't cutting off the delivery of the funds to the people. So, I move that we amend this motion to reflect the allocation of 1 million dollars, I'm sorry, 9 million dollars instead of 1 million dollars, and everything else reads as is.
No, I'll second the motion. Any other questions?
I, I want us to wait, because if this gets voted down, then we're in trouble. You're not giving us enough information. It's all for hearsay. We're already doing an audit to make sure that funding is where it should be, there is nothing in black and white to show me the funding in this account, so...
And nothing keeps us from doing the ongoing, as, to do an audit. And nothing keeps us from doing the ongoing as, to do an audit as we are continuing to help our citizens. With the money that's been allocated.
Yes. Is it some way, um, so we won't stop the checks or whatever that are to be written tomorrow? That we can, I guess?
Pay for that amount of service?
Well, the motion right now is to approve the nine million.
To approve this, right.
I'm ready for the vote on that.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
How was your, what was your vote, Commissioner? For?
Yes.
Okay, it passes three-one. Next, please.
And if I may please put a note, because I don't have accurate information that I'm voting on. I would have preferred to have that information. Simple as that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question, Chairman. That, will that amended be reflected in the, the next meeting's minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes, um, I think the next item, um, you all wanted was item number fifteen. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. This is a recommendation for award of ITB twenty-two dash twenty-eight, which is Alarm Sprinkler Inspection Services. Which is an annual contract for Clayton County, Georgia. The request is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications. The vendor is Akon Fire Solutions LLC, located in Stockbridge, Georgia. Funding is available through the Building Maintenance Department's General Fund. The bid tabulation, summary, department recommendation memo, and agreement. Are all attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation. authorize the chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract. And authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
So a motion. I'll make the mo- I'll make the motion as there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Haber?
Uh, what sprinkler system, or is it something throughout the county or specific?
Yes, it's for different locations. I'm not sure if we have anybody from Building and Maintenance, but it is for different locations, um, throughout the county. So it's for each building that has that. This is a part of the project, you know, to have it inspected.
Okay.
Yes.
That, that's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Thank you all.
Our next item is item number twenty-seven, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-One-Fifty-Six. Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening again. Uh, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-One-Fifty-Six is the resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Establishing a time for the Board of Commissioners to meet for pre-agenda, pre-agenda meetings scheduled for the first Tuesday of the month. To establish a time for the Board of Commissioners to meet for committee of the whole meeting scheduled for the second Tuesday of the month. To provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion as there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question, clarification. So this is going to eliminate the fourth, uh, Tuesday?
Correct. But it'll go into effect, uh, August. So there will be a fourth. There will be a work, a set, a work session for the twenty-sixth. Following that, the next work session will be, uh, the second Tuesday in August.
So on the normal board meetings, where our start time is six-thirty, there will be five-thirty as far as the agenda pre-meeting goes.
So the first meeting of the month will be a five-thirty start. The second Tuesday of the month will be a work session.
Okay.
The third Tuesday will be six-thirty, and there will be no meeting on the fourth Tuesday.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on. So the third Tuesday, there's no work session?
No work session.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Mister Chairman, our next item is item number thirty-one, Board Appointment for the Code Enforcement Board.
All right, this is a board appointment to Code Enforcement Board. Ms. Lorraine Oliver term on the Code Enforcement Board. Expires July sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. New term begins July sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, and will expire July sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. At large appointment, I have spoken with, uh, that I have learned that Ms. Lorraine Oliver has an interest in remaining on the board. So I will offer her up for a reappointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Mister Chairman, our next items are board appointments. I'm sorry, excuse me, are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address. Name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profan, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening, uh, board. This is, my name is Ellis Steele, uh, planning consultant with Clayton County Planning and Zoning. The first, um, zoning item is BOC number two-one-zero-eight, that's zero-one-three-eight. It's for, uh, future land use map amendment from G C to M X I. Uh, the applicant is, um, Hext Walker, P C, on behalf of T D C Logistics LLC. And I stated this is a future land use map, uh, amendment from G C, General Commercial, to M X I. Which is mixed-use commercial and industrial, to allow a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot warehouse distribution center. Uh, with, uh, which consists of twenty-eight-point-six acres. So property is located at fifty-four ninety and fifty-five forty-four, Highway Forty-two, in Ellenwood. And also known as parcel one-two-one-seven-one-C dash A zero-zero-one. And one-two-one-seven-one-A dash A zero-zero-two, and located near the intersection of Highway Forty-two and Forest Parkway. The subject property is, uh, G C, and this is a site plan of, uh, proposed, the, proposed development. The, uh, zoning advisory group recommended denial, and staff recommended denial as well.
All right, thank you. Mister Applicant present. Yeah, nobody hasn't asked, so I guess we could.
Under your standing procedure rules that you all adopted, that when there's the district commissioner is not there, then there's, um. There, you can make a motion to move that to the next meeting that they'll be present, yes?
That's the motion I was making earlier.
So, she is not here, Commissioner Anderson.
That's right. And, uh, she's not feeling well today, and actually, uh, Mr. Chapman reached out to her, and she requested that we table as well. And we're happy to do that so that she can be present.
That would be the, uh, the motion. I would make the motion as there's a second to that motion.
Commissioner, I, uh, Chairman, I'd like to, uh, to make one slight amendment, if you would. You sent items twenty-two, I mean thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four are all related. That you can take all three of those and make a motion to, uh, table those to the next.
What's the date?
I believe it's August sixteenth.
Say again, I'm sorry.
August sixteen.
August sixteen. All right, I'd like to make a motion to table items thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four of the zoning matters until August ninth. No, sixteenth, I'm sorry. August sixteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. See you next month.
Next item is BOC number two-two-zero-two-dash-zero-one-three-eight, I'm sorry, eight-three. It's a C U P to allow a funeral home in the general business, G B zoning district. The applicant is Mister Knight, requesting a condition use permit for a funeral home in general business zoning district on zero-point-six-eight acres of land. Uh, such property located at fifteen-seventy-five, uh, Commercial Court in Jonesboro. Also known as parcel zero-six-zero-six-six-C dash B zero-one-five. The property is located near the intersection of, uh, I'm sorry, near the corner of Terry Boulevard and Commercial Court. Uh, the zoning advisory group has recommended approval with condition, and staff has also recommended approval with condition.
Applicant present. Before you state your name, uh.
Callah Knight.
Uh, would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal, so somebody oppose your request?
Yes.
Usually two or three, but it's up to you.
No, okay, yes, sir.
Okay. You wanna save two?
That's fine.
Okay, put, put eight minutes on the clock. Please proceed, sir.
Oh, um, my name, Callah Knight. I'm looking to put a funeral home in this facility. Um, that's pretty much all I got to say.
Okay. All right, well, this is public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request, please come forward. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Franklin?
Uh, only thing I would ask, can you please bring up, do you have the site that you're trying to go into? For the, um, purpose of the business? Do you have a picture of it that we can go down into a little deeper? Okay. The only thing I see is that area doesn't quite look conducive for, um, the purpose in which you're asking it for. Even though, um, it is here. Um, how many? It can, is there any way that you can just hold this one and we can discuss it a little bit further?
Ma'am, oh, yes. Um, my, my only other thing is that we're, the facility that we're looking to use is mainly to do ship outs. So we're not looking to have large services or anything like that in that facility. But we do have this capacity to hold by law thirty seats. So we have a space that will be able to hold sixty pe- sixty people.
So you said you're gonna use it for ship outs?
Yes. It's a, by law, we have to have a funeral home license to ship a body out to any other state. So we have to have a facility that, by standards, is the state law, requires us to have certain things. And that was a thirty-seat, thirty-seat pre- pre- um, chapel and space for eight caskets. And we do have all of that.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, make a recommendation that we hold this and, uh, discuss it further.
Are you willing to hold it until for further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Hold it to when?
To August, the next date, August, uh, sixty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is BOC number two-two-zero-two-dash-zero-one-nine-one. C U P to allow a special events facility. Uh, the applicant is, um, Royalty Kids Creation. Uh, they're requesting a C U P for a special events facility on four acres of land. The subject property is located at, uh, six-two-six-seven Rivendell Road, Rivendell, Georgia. Uh, property also known as parcel one-three-one-two-zero-D dash C zero-zero-one. The subject property located near the corner of Rivendell Road and Steeplechase Lane. The staff has recommended approval with condition, as well as the zoning advisory group recommended approval with condition.
Applicant present. Please come forward. State your names and how many minutes you would like to reserve for a rebuttal, should somebody oppose you.
My name is Sandrika Bradley, and I say eight minutes.
You wanna save eight minutes?
Yes.
All right, set the timer for two minutes, please. You only got two minutes to talk now.
Okay, um, well, I'm Sandrika Bradley. My property, of course, is Royalty Kids Creation. It is a kids' event center, 'cause everybody keeps saying special event hall. I know that's what it has to be called, but it's for kids, not adults. And it's just where I have a gaming room, a girl spa party. So it's just particular events for kids, like gaming party or a spa party.
Okay. All right.
And that's, that's it. That's just what it is.
That's the two minutes, right? All right, is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? All right, Commissioner Haber?
I have a question of, uh, the zoning staff and, uh. Do you all look at these properties?
Yes, ma'am.
When they, not just pictures, do you all actually go out to the sites?
Yes, ma'am.
And you, you have seen this?
Yes, ma'am. I posted a sign for, for this one and most of the ones.
Okay. If I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, unless this property has been sold, it's been before us at least three times? For different projects?
Yes, it was a car dealership before I got it, two years ago, rather. They've been vacant for two years.
Uh, what's this building behind? Will you all put the picture up again? What is this?
It is attached. It's part of my building. It's like a barn. I know. Like, it's nothing, like, it's just a barn where cars can drive under it, but it's nothing, like, to do with anything of the building.
Well, um, in District Two, we're trying to up the quality of life.
Hmm.
And this does not.
Hmm.
Do anything for the quality of life for our area. And, uh, due to that, I'll have to deny this. This can't be, this needs to be upgraded or whatever. So the way it's presented now, I have to say denial.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous. Sorry. Next.
Okay. The next item, uh, BOC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-two. Uh, was requested by the applicant for, to be tabled for thirty days. This is a request by Sam's. Uh, on a Jonesboro Road, uh, they requested, they were asking for a C U P to increase from twelve pumps to twenty-four pump. And they requested to be tabled.
Commissioner Diggs?
I don't know, did, uh, community development, did you receive that? 'Cause I didn't receive that.
Yeah, they're the ones saying.
Yes. Great. Okay, I move that we table this until the August sixteenth meeting?
Uh, second emotion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
The next request is BOC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-five-seven. A C U P to allow automotive sales and leasing. Uh, the applicant is Lisa Lim. Uh, the request is for a C U P, uh, for auto, automobile, truck, trailer, and boat sales and leasing business. In the H, H I Heavy Industrial Zoning District on two-point-zero-seven acres of land. The subject property is located at five-five-seven-five Frontage Road in Forest Park. Uh, such property, the subject parcel is also known as parcel three, I'm sorry, one-three-zero-eight-four. Dash zero-eight-five-zero-zero-seven. The subject property is located near the corner of Frontage Road and Southfield Parkway. The zoning advisory group recommended approval with conditions, and staff recommended approval with conditions. I'm sorry, condition, one condition.
All right, applicant present. Would you like to save any minutes for a rebuttal?
Um, sure, five, please.
Five, okay, put five on the clock.
Thank you. Um, good evening, uh, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Lily Lim. Um, I'm here representing Lift Inc., uh, for our project at five-five-seven-five Frontage Road. Um, this is currently a, um, lift driver center, which means there's existing auto service. And as well as office, um, and what we're requesting for this, uh, item, as well as the next item, is. as the next item is, um, the ability to rent vehicles to the general public. Um, and there's no new construction on site, um, we're using the site as is. Um, a couple of years ago, we, um, improved the site, uh, by making updates to the building facade, um, and this was previously, um, a J.C. Penney Logistics Center, um, so it, uh, I think looks better now than it used to, um, and, yeah, so we're not looking to make any physical changes to the site, um, essentially just adding a use that was, uh, required by the code, uh, prior to operating. I am here for any other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Commissioner Hambrich.
Uh, yes, I did visit the site, and it does look much better, it looks good.
I'm glad.
As a matter of fact, it looks like it is already a, a rental or leasing. I did not, um, recall seeing, and I don't know if you all know, do you have trucks on property now? I, I noticed there's a, one, the condition of, uh.
Um, like, commercial trucks? I don't believe we have commercial trucks on site.
Yeah, I can't remember if I saw that or not, did you all see that in your visit?
No, ma'am, we didn't see any trucks.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, um, I, I, um, would like to approve, um, BLC two-two-zero-three-zero-one-five-seven CUP with the one condition of no trucks or trailers and all, so.
And you're in agreeance with that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Before you did that, it looks like the application also included boat sales? Is that what something that you wanted as well, or did you want to speak to that issue?
I believe the zoning advisory group also added that as part of the condition, um, we are fine with, um, that because it was just the way that the code is written, that was just the category of, of use, um, so we are only doing automobile sales.
Okay, so does that one condition, or would that be two conditions?
You can have it, one condition, it be limited to automobile sales and leasing only, excluding boat sales, truck and trailer.
Okay.
Sales.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Franklin, any other questions? Here, and none of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item is the same property, uh, BLC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-nine, it's a CUP on the property at seven, I'm sorry, five-five-seven-five Frontage Road, Forest Park. Uh, it is to allow car rental, a car rental business, uh, on the, on said property, and, uh, it is same applicant, Ms. Lim, and this is, uh, basically same property, just allowing this particular use a- as a, um, car rental business. Uh, staff is recommending approval with, with one condition, I'm sorry, no condition, just approval.
Ma'am.
Hi, guys. Um, I don't think we need to reserve any minutes, um, for the record, my name is Lily Lim, here to represent Lift, uh, we are proposing car rentals at five-five-seven-five Frontage Road, um, and we're not doing any construction.
All right, against public hearing, anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Commissioner Franklin.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hambrich.
Yes, uh, I would like to approve, I move that we approve, uh, BLC two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-nine, uh, CUP to allow for car rental business.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Before you vote, the last item, and I didn't raise it because I didn't know where this was gonna go, you put a condition on there that it, the, the business is limited to automobile sales, and now that you're approving it for also to use as a car rental, then I think you should make a condition that, um, the business is also allowed to provide, that the limitation is for automobile sales, leasing, and rental as your conditional use permit.
So you want to amend that?
Because I, I mean, I could understand why they did two separate ones, 'cause if you denied the first and did the second.
They would.
But now, but if you limited it to that first one, then you'd be kind of being contradictory. So you're, I would suggest that you make a condition with this CUP to say that the business is limited to automobile sales, leasing, and car rentals.
Well, okay, 'cause I didn't say limited to, but I did say for automob- uh, bill sales, but to limit, okay, well, I changed my motion, uh, for, uh, BLC two-two-zero-three-zero-one-nine-nine CUP to allow for and limit to car rental business. Is that?
And automobile sales and leasing, so that you make sure that you're not contradicting the previous
Okay.
approval.
Automobile sales and rentals.
Okay, to allow for automobile sales and rental.
Is there a second? How second to motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item is BLC number two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-two-zero-two, it's a future land use map amendment, uh, to, uh, amend from G C to H D R. The applicant is Specific Group LLC, uh, and this is for a map amendment. The request is to construct sixty-four units, uh, attached townhome community on fifteen-point-three-seven acres of land. The subject property is located at six-six-eight-eight Mount Zion Boulevard, tomorrow, property uh, also known as parcel one-two-one-zero-eight-eight-dash-C-zero-zero-two. The subject property is located near the corner of Mount Zion Boulevard and, uh, Maddox Road, and it has a companion, um, companion, uh, case numbers, uh, two-two-zero, BLC two-two-zero-four-zero-zero-one and, um, L S two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-zero-five-one. Uh, staff is recommending approval as well as the zoning advisory group is recommending approval.
Can we get that read again, uh, um, with the, um, the numbers again? I'm not following you.
Well, this is one.
No, 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 he says zero-zero, I just want it read into, uh, read in correctly.
Okay, go ahead.
You mean the companion numbers?
Uh, no, the whole thing, right, you read, you read some different numbers.
Okay, I'm sorry, so this is, uh, BLC number two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-two-zero-two, future land use map amendment.
I'm, okay, I'm looking at
Item number forty?
I'm looking at zero.
No, it's item forty.
Okay.
Item number forty?
That's what I had.
Okay, 'cause I saw, you read zero-zero something, right.
All right, is the applicant present?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm clear, I'm clear, I'm still want the applicant come forward, so we can, yeah, deploy him, put it in record.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members, good to see you all again.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Tyler.
This is one of those, uh, requests, applicant requests, where the district commissioner's not present, so we're gonna ask that it be tabled, are you good with that?
Yeah, we're okay with that for the August sixteenth date.
Okay, I'll make the motion to table, is there a second? Until August sixteenth, oh, go ahead.
Forty-one is also, uh, a companion, so it may be good to take both of those together, forty and forty-one?
All right, motion to table forty and forty-one, due to the district commissioner not being here and agreed upon by the applicant until August sixteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. All right, thank you.
The next item is BLC number two-two-zero-five-dash-zero-two-zero-three, a CUP for a tire shop, the applicant has requested a table for, for this item.
Okay, they sent you notice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so, is applicant present? Did they show up anywhere? Nope. All right, I'll make the motion to, uh, table until August sixteenth, at the applicant's request, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must, must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers shouldn't, should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
And before I call up the first, call the first name, I just wanted to recognize and acknowledge, I don't know what we did to get three judges in, at our meeting today, but we have Judge Hill, of course, uh, Judge Scott is with us, and Judge, uh, Bernie Butler's with us, so appreciate y'all being there. All right, Atanya Jean Funny.
Atanya Jean Funny, Hampton, Georgia. I saved the space for number one, but nobody wanted to use it, I guess. Good evening to the chairman, vice chair, commissioners, the community. So, um, Facebook reminded me that it's been four years since we were outside of the commissioner's office protesting because our voices were being silenced through live stream, so now we're circling back. So now, public comic is, comment is at the end of the meeting and the time has been reduced. Ironically, today, you would have actually heard someone that is having, well, you're gonna hear from someone that is actually having an issue with one of the agenda items, item number eleven. So had that young lady been able to speak at the beginning of the meeting, it may have given you a little more insight in what is going on. So I just want to say that although you may not want to hear from that five percent that speaks, this is one hundred percent wrong, thank you.
Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Actually, I'm, I'm not even gonna read this, this is insulting. What this board has done is disrespectful to the people of this county. Seems that you've already made up your mind with issues before it comes to a vote. You insult the people by putting this at the end of the meeting, so that sounds like a totalitarian dictatorship. We don't have a voice, or the voice is limited, so, that's it.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Public comment today, I will speak about the upcoming request by the Office of Performance Management, of which Dr. Smith adds, and Ms. Celeste Hollis Singleton is Senior Grants Analyst, and their request for two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for their purchase of software called E-Sivis. A little background here, the Office of Performing Management last year tracked ninety-million dollars, and that was outside the Splot programs. With E-Sivis software, they will have the potential to increase their tracking of grants by twenty percent, with a dollar value of approximately twenty-three million increase, which is an increase over the ninety million already in play of twenty-six percent. Caveat here, twenty-two grants are uploaded nationally daily. Many of you tout yourselves as business people, and as you know, with any investment, there is potential for failure, as well as great rewards. And for the risk of, of tw- two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand with a potential of reward of approximately twenty-three million, I, as a taxpayer, vote for and approve of the request. And you, Dr. Commissioner Anderson, as my commissioner, I expect you to vote for approval of this request. She isn't here, but I'll meet with her privately. Senior, are there any questions? I'm glad you all agree with me if there are no questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, Morris Weiss.
Commissioner and Board members, my name is Morris Weiss, I'm a resident in Clayton County, Rex, Georgia. My concern is there's a lot of stakes going on residential properties, and I, for one, that reside in that, in that area, and neighbors are asking me what's going on because they are putting stakes in the ground on the front of residential properties, and those stakes are being placed on residential properties about approximately thirty feet from the street. So what we're wanting to know, I want to know, is what's going on in the neighborhood on Stagecoach Road? So if anybody can address that concern, that is a concern that I have.
Mr. Rowland, this is right here, uh, you don't have to, you don't have to, just meet with this gentleman and make sure you provide him with the information, he'll be able to tell you what's going on, sir.
Okay, I thank you all very much for listening to the question.
Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, excuse me, Rex, Georgia. Chairman Turner, prayers of protection for you and your family based on the ClaytonCrescent.org article regarding the GBI investigation of threats against you. In light of the recent federal public corruption convictions, as citizens for former Stonecraft Me- Stonecraft Mayor.
I gotta keep it germane to things within our purview as well as, uh, items on the agenda.
Okay, well, this is germane to us, we need for the GBI to expand the investigation in Clayton County regarding pu- political interference, determine his contract with Corbin, allegations, um, F this complaint filed against commissioners for misuse of public funds, equipment, travel, and we need a forensic audit against the care pri- um, funding as has just been discussed up here. Also, we need to know why Jonesboro Police Department did not charge Ms. Franklin for filing a false police report
Yeah, keep it, keep it.
which is a felony against Ms. Vivis. Clarification requested, home rule power does not extend to subjects that are within the ex- exclusive control of General Assembly. Commissioners may not amend their local legislation or that ordinances in order to change the composition or form of the county governing authority, i.e. the commissioners cannot change the number of commissioners or the structure of the local governing authority. My question is, what was the structure of the board prior to June the twenty-first, and what is the current structure now?
That's a good question.
And are y'all in violation if you changed the structure June the twenty-first of the General Assembly?
No, I would say we were, are not in violation, uh, through home rule, we can change reporting structure.
Okay.
As to who reports to who.
Okay, so do you still have full authority as the chairman? Okay, so do you still have full authority as the chairman of the county? That we elect?
I would say my, some of my duties have been minimized.
Has been minimized?
That's correct.
And so that does not change the structure?
I'm still the chairman.
You're still the chairman?
I'm still the chairman.
But does it...
And I still officiate the meetings and other, some other duties.
Okay, but how does that play in the structure? That's what I'm trying to get to, the structure.
I don't know specifically what you're looking for, but the chairman and the board makes the totality of the board.
Okay.
Again, I'm a full-time, district commissioners are full, are part-time, but yet still, we all have one vote. So as a board, we move the county forward.
Okay, so can y'all give me the answer?
Reporting structure is what you're, what you're talking about. That's what was, has been changed.
Okay, so what was the prior structure?
The COO reported to the chairman through, and the, through the board.
Okay. And now, the COO reports to...
Reports to full board.
Full board, full-time and part-time commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can't pronounce the first name, but last name is Knight. Ms. Knight. Okay, hold on, we'll move on. Brittany Mathis.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Mathis, Marl, Georgia. My concerns are in regards to item number 11 on you all's agenda. I have been trying to get assistance from African Children's Funds for three months now. The holdup is, they cannot get in touch with my landlord. I have called your office, Commissioner Davis, trying to get assistance with this issue. I have had eviction filed against me. I have a demand letter. And I have been, basically, I feel like I've been given the runaround. I've submitted everything I can on my end, my lease, my demand letter, my proof of income. And my children and I, our whole lives are focused around our home. I work from home, they are homeschooled. I'm being told that we cannot be pushed forward because my landlord won't respond, and I feel like that policy is going to make the homeless population rise. I'm here tonight, not only for myself, but everyone in this situation. This is scary. The numbers are going back up. We don't know what is getting ready to happen. And from what I just heard tonight, the funds are there, but little policies like this are stopping people from getting the help they need. I actually stopped the CFO of African Children's Funds to try to speak with him. But like I said, I'm not just concerned about myself. I am a doula in the community, and I work with a lot of moms who are fearful about what's about to happen to them after they have their children. So I'm just asking that, if something can be done tonight, not only for myself, but for everyone that is in this situation. I went to the eRap event at the Rex Center, and we were told that we would all get help that day. But because of the overwhelm of so many citizens coming out, the event ended early. And we were told there would be another event, which we haven't heard anything on. I have jumped through hoop after hoop after hoop, and I am tired.
Your time is up, ma'am, but let me ask the question. You said, you said that you have completed everything that you had to do. The landlord is not being cooperative.
That is correct.
And Judge Hill, could you come to the podium, please? Are there other options for her if a landlord is not being compliant or cooperative? I mean, we can't make them take the money, correct?
Correct. So if the landlord is cooperative, we can assist in that manner. If not, there are some landlords that refuse payment, and we just want to proceed. In that instance, there are resources, which African Children's Fund does have, to assist as far as transition. There are funding, there's funds as far as if the landlord refuses to assist with storage, moving truck, and if, application fee, if they apply, and then also assistance, I think up to three months, in a new location. I will say, as far as the, I was at the event that was at Lake Spivey, and it was an overwhelming amount of people that came. They, they did cut off the amount of people, and then they did have another event on July the 9th, just for those people. But we have another event on July 23rd, and that's going to be at, I think, the South Clayton Rex Center. So, but I'm going, I will speak with you.
Yeah, I was about to say, please make sure that you get with this young lady and get her any assistance that we can offer her. Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Do we need executive session?
Yes, sir, on personnel and litigation.
All right, I'll make a motion, go into executive session, personnel and litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Madam Clerk, you ready? All right, motion to reconvene.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Hambrick and second by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, what do we have?
All right.
Take them together.
Okay. First is a settlement in the matter of Clayton County, Georgia versus Cox Land and Timber. John B. Cox, Calvary's Harvest Baptist Church Incorporated, Craig Bennett, and Houston Specialty Insurance Company in the amount of $20,000, also to dismiss Civil Action Number 2018 CV 00903 in State Court of Clayton County. Next is settlement relating to a accident involving Thanh Trong, related to Clayton County and, and Michael Green individually in his official capacity. It's related to an accident that occurred on June 22nd, 2021, at or near 3786 North Parkway in Clayton County, in the amount of $70,000. The next is related to a settlement involving Hoale, H-O-A-L-E, also related to an accident involved, that occurred on June 22nd, 2021, at or near 3786 North Parkway in Clayton County, also against Clayton County and Michael Green individually in his official capacity in the amount of $65,000. And finally, is settlement involving Quintavious Handchit in a lawsuit against Clayton County and Joshua Gary, both individually in his official capacity. It's related to an accident that occurred on November 1st, 2020, at or near the intersection of North Avenue and Terra Boulevard in Clayton County in amount of $35,000. And also approve the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required.
So motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
Good evening again, Clayton County esteemed Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Per Civil Service Rule 5.203, and on behalf of Superior Court, Human Resources is requesting to hire Tanya Bogah, B-O-G-A, as a staff attorney at an advanced entry salary of $84,000. The salary will be matched to Clayton County's current compensation scale, which means that the $84,000 could be a little less or a little more, but not a significant difference from the $84,000. I also want to put on record that the total cost of this request will also include an additional cost for pension, FICA slash Medicare, group health, and workers' compensation.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Ambles. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night.